I'd like to call the, to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of September 28th, 2016. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Minutes Act, or Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking right over there. And out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items. Item 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 16007. Item 1.2C County Preliminary Platt Number 16004. Item 1.3 Combined Special Permit Use Permit Number 11-
I.
Okay.
Yes.
Item 1.4 Special Permit Number 1013K. Item 1.5 County Special Permit Number 16044. Item 2.2 Special Permit Number 300C. And item 5.1 Special Permit Number 16041. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the revised minutes of the regular meeting held September 14th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Here.
Please call the roll.
Okay, Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Please note that several items are being removed for a separate public hearing due to receiving letters of opposition, including the three associated items, which are item 1.2A Change of Zone Number 16025. Item 1.2B County Change of Zone Number 16026. And item 1.2C, the county preliminary plat number 16004. And the other two items being removed are item 1.4 Special Permit Number 1013K and item 1.5 County Special Permit Number 16044. The remaining items of the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a public hearing, separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak on an item or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read the remaining consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, please call the remaining items of the consent agenda.
As noted by the chair, items numbers 1, 2, A, B, C, and item 1.4 and item 1.5 are being removed from the consent agenda and scheduled for separate public hearings. Remaining on the consent agenda is item 1.1 Comprehensive Plan, or Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 16007 to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, the acquisition of a permanent conservation easement by the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District of approximately 20 acres more or less, generally located at southwest 98th and Cole Brook Road. This is final action on that item unless appealed to the County Board within four, or within seven days, excuse me. And the other remaining item under consent is Combined Special Permit Use Permit Number 11I to add a special permitted use for a culinary academy on property generally located at 6800 South 32nd Street. And this is also final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these consent agenda items?
I see none.
When we're ready, or, I'm sorry, is there anyone here wishing to speak on either one of these two items on the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay, we would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the remaining consent agenda?
Second. Weber.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I will now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to this meeting.
Okay, we have received two requests by the applicants for item 2.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 16005 to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a request to declare a city-owned parking lot as surplus property for the zoo expansion on property generally located at approximately 2847A Street. And we've also received a request for a six-week, additional six-week deferral on item 2.2 Special Permit Number 16009 for the construction of a carport on property generally located at 1801 Kings Highway. That would be deferred until the November 9th Planning Commission meeting.
Entertain a motion on the request for deferral?
Move to defer. Core?
Second. Cornelius.
Okay, please call the roll.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there anyone present wishing to testify on either of these two items rather than waiting until the deferred hearing date? Okay, don't see any. We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing items.
Okay. Under item 3.1 Public Hearing, I'm going to call 1.2A, 1.2B, and 1.2C together. They are associated. Change of Zone Number 16025 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on 2.85 acres more or less on property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item 1.2B is County Change of Zone Number 16026 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on 11.48 acres more or less on a, on a portion of property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. And County Preliminary Platt Number 16004 Silverhawk Estates for 23 lots on approximately 80 acres more or less, including cross-jurisdictional property with 66 acres more or less in the Roca extraterritorial jurisdiction, 11 acres more or less in the county extra, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and 3 acres more or less in the City of Lincoln extraterritorial jurisdiction on property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. This is final action on this county preliminary plat unless appealed to the County Board within seven days. And staff recommendation for the county preliminary plat is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I see none.
Tom Chayka, Planning Staff. We did receive one letter in opposition from Linda and Larry Brownson at 6101 Witstruck Road. Their main concern was additional dust created on Witstruck Road from the additional traffic that would be from these 23 lots. The preliminary plat is for 23 lots. This is located just south of Witstruck Road and east of 54th Street. This is the area of the subdivision. What's pretty unique in this circumstance, you don't see this very often, is this subdivision is actually under three different jurisdictions. Up to this white line here, all of this, about roughly 75% of the subdivision is within Roca's jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction. This little tiny triangle is within the city's jurisdiction, and this rest of it is within the county's jurisdiction. That's why there are two different change of zone applications. One goes forward to the City Council, one goes forward to the County Board. Of these 23, of the 23 lots, there's one lot and a very tiny portion of a second lot that's within the city jurisdiction. Then there's approximately three lots or portions of lots that are within the county So the, so even though the, the application and the staff report shows the entire boundary of this subdivision, Planning Commission's authority would only pertain to that area outside of Roca's jurisdiction. These lots will be served by Rural Water, and Roca did approve the, their, the project within their jurisdiction, the preliminary plat and the change of zone they approved on September 12th. Take any questions?
Questions? None? Okay. Applicant.
Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today on behalf of BCL INC., LLC, a group of investors that have an option on this property. I think Tom did a pretty good job of summarizing things. I'm going to put up another exhibit here that gives you maybe a little reference with the Roca jurisdiction issues. So clear over on the left, you can see the village of Roca here, and the light beige shading is everything in their jurisdiction. And then as Tom mentioned, so there's projects outlined in orange there. As Tom mentioned, then, this is my first tri-jurisdiction project, too. So we get a lot of public hearings involved, and, and at this point, one of the most important ones is that the Roca Planning Commission and the Roca Village Board have both approved this for a change of zone to acreage based on the preliminary plat, the same preliminary plat you have in your packet is the one that they approved. Their growth area is, for the village itself, is primarily up into this northern region above town. You can see the size of town. It's probably been largely that size since, I think, about the 60s. And so this area is, is further out and, and what they thought to be appropriate. You can see in the purple there, we have the Preserve at Cross Creek, which was, part of this was done in the mid 2000s, and the rest here recently. We've got some more five-acre parcels here and other acreage development here. So I think they felt that this was appropriate for them, and, and something I discussed with them and, and something I want to say today is that we have planned in their preliminary plat, as you can see, future connections to the south coming out about right here. And so I think it's fair to assume that at some point this land may, may go to AGR in Roca's jurisdiction and perhaps this. And what we discussed with them was that we come down and, and at some point when this happens, we can connect to the Preserve at Cross Creek, and this provides a route to 68th Street. And if any of these go in this area, it'll provide at least, I think, the southern lots here. That may be a quicker route for them to then get out to 54th, too. So without that happening, yes, these lots will all use Witstruck Road for their traffic. But I think in the long term, there's probably going to be additional connections out of the subdivision. And so the Roca Planning Commission and Village Board had no issues with that. We've had lots of meetings, two different meetings, with the county engineer on site distance design issues, everything else related to that, and they haven't expressed a concern about the trip generation here either. So I think as Tom alluded to in his staff report, I think in order to, even though a small portion of this is in the county and city jurisdictions, in order to allow this subdivision to develop out the way we've shown it, and given that the majority decision-makers are Roca, that I think they'd like to follow Roca's lead, if you will, and approve this. So, so we have the three items, the prelim plat, and then the change of zone in the city's jurisdiction, and the change of zone in the county's jurisdiction. So we'd request your approval of all three of those.
Questions for Mike?
Do you, can you, I know this isn't maybe, I don't think that there's probably been a traffic study done, but if you would estimate 23 lots, how many trips per day do you think that would be?
Well, I think the typical number is about nine per household. So this would bring probably in the range of 180 to 200. The current, Tom and I talked, the current data from the county shows only 41 underlying trips on the road today. So it is a significant increase, but well below the typical 400 to 500 trips threshold where the county begins to look at paving it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes. Have you, have you had any opportunity to talk with Mr. or Mrs. Brownson about their consent?
I have not. It was direct contact with the planning department, and so, and they weren't at either of the Roca hearings either, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Now we will have testimony and support, and this testimony will be for all of the three associated items that Jerry called. Okay. Is there any testimony in opposition for the, any of the three items? Are there any staff questions, additional staff questions? Applicant rebuttal? None? Okay. So we'll entertain a motion.
I guess we have to call them separately?
Yes, we must call them separately, yes.
Okay. First of all, Change of Zone Number 16025 from AG to AGR on 2.85 acres more or less on property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval?
Second. Core.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Sure. I'm going to, my discussion will be on all of these related items, and I won't bother to make comments on the subsequent ones. This looks, you know, on paper, this looks really complicated because of the, the multiple jurisdictions involved. The jurisdiction that covers most of the area is in favor of this, and I'm inclined to agree with their assessment. I, I read the, the letter in opposition, and I'm sympathetic to that, but what we've heard here is that the county engineer feels like there's sufficient capacity on Witstruck Road to handle the trips that will be generated from this development. So I'm inclined to support it.
Other discussion?
I, I do kind of feel like my hands are tied in this because of Roca already making their decision, but since they, the majority of the application is in their jurisdiction, I feel like that's acceptable.
Other? I think this is a necessary action to accommodate orderly and appropriate rural residential growth, and certainly per the comp plan. So I'm going to support the motion as well, all three motions, actually. So let's call the vote on the first item.
Okay, this is behind Change of Zone Number 16025. Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. The next item is County Change of Zone Number 16026 from AG to AGR on 11.48 acres more or less on a portion of property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Motion?
Move approval.
Second. Cornelius.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, if not?
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, action on County Preliminary Platt Number 16004 Silverhawk Estates for 23 lots on approximately 80 acres more or less, including cross-jurisdictional property with 66 acres more or less in Roca extraterritorial jurisdiction, 11 acres more or less in the county extraterritorial jurisdiction, and 3 acres more or less in the City of Lincoln extraterritorial jurisdiction on property generally located at South 60th Street and Witstruck Road. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed within seven days to the County Board. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Move approval?
Second. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, next item coming off of consent for public hearing is Special Permit Number 1013K to allow for the operation of a kennel facility with an outdoor area on approximately, or on property generally located at 5930 South 57th Street. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
None.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. I'd like to note before we start, there was a late letter that was submitted to the Planning Commission that I thought was worth mentioning. It's from the Trade Center West Owners Association, signed by Tim Knight, the president, and Devin Wagner, the treasurer. We characterize this as neutral, not in opposition, but they would like to eventually meet with the applicant. I think they want some assurance that this business, if approved, is going to be conducted on terms that is not going to be a nuisance or not conducive to commercial interests of others in the Trade Center. So the area that we're talking about is, we all generally characterize this as the Trade Center. It is southwest of the intersection of South 56th Street. There's Old Cheney Road, Highway 2. So it's this fairly large, significant commercial center southwest of that major intersection. This is Waltz Road here, and this is the entrance into the western portion of the Trade Center. And the specific lots that we're talking about are these three that are right here that are outlined by the crosshatch line. A kennel in and of itself with an outdoor area for animals is a permitted use within the H4 zoning district, which is the zoning designation that covers the entire Trade Center. But there's a limitation on that in that the number of animals allowed outside at any one time is limited to three. To exceed that number of animals outside at any one time is allowed by special permit, but must come to the Planning Commission. So that's why this application is for you today, to allow a kennel here with an outdoor area that has more than 10 animals outside at any one time. And so if we were to zoom in, use the applicant's site plan to zoom in on this area a little bit, these are the three lots here that we were talking about previously. This is the building, and this area shaded in blue. It's not dimensioned specifically. I, I roughed it out. It looks like it's approximately 80 by 20, and that would be the outdoor, the outside area for animals. If we look at the special permit, it does have several criteria under which this special permit is allowed. First one states that the outdoor area and fence surrounding the outdoor area must meet the setbacks of the zoning district. As I said, this isn't a scale drawing, but I'm fairly confident that the area shown there meets that requirement. Says that outdoor area shall be screened 100% from the ground to six feet with an opaque fence or wall. Again, the application didn't note whether, you know, what that type of screening was going to be. The outdoor area, or the use of the outdoor area is limited to hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. I note that your staff report makes it look like I'm using some military time or some designation. It's actually supposed to be 10:00 PM. Looks like I forgot a one there. Animals in the outdoor area shall be under supervision of handlers at all times. So those are the, those are the specific limitations. As I said, some of those items were not addressed specifically in the application, which is why the recommendation for approval is to add a note that if this is approved by the Planning Commission, that this kennel will be operated subject to those limitations of special permit. So with that, the Planning Department is recommending conditional approval. I'd note that, since I was having a bad day, there was one other, there was an omission in the conditions of approval. I left a word out in site-specific condition 1.1. We have already revised the resolution to include that, should say kennel with an outdoor area. So we made that modification to the resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any commission might have.
Can you, do you have any idea, based on your illustration, where the opposition letter, the?
The, yes, I do.
The location of the opposition?
Yes, let me, yes, the one letter that was in opposition came from, by the way, this, this swing through here, these, this is the railroad tracks, railroad line, I mean, it's not frequently used, hardly used at all, but there's a railroad line through here. That opposition came from one of the owners of one of the lots here on the other side of the tracks.
All right. Other questions for Brian at this point? No? Okay, applicant?
Members of the commission, my name is Derek Zimmerman, and I represent Colleen Clark, who is the proposed purchaser of the property located at 5930 South 57th Street. And I'll just say right up front, I received the, the letter from the same time as the Planning Department did from the association, and to start out by saying, we'll absolutely meet with them after the hearing to talk about any concerns they may have. I think after the testimony I provide today, I think that we'll be able to demonstrate that their concerns should be alleviated based on how the operation is going to be and how our proposed use is going to work. Ms. Clark is the owner of Camp Bow Wow, which is a premier dog daycare and boarding facility that has been operating successfully in Lincoln for over eight and a half years at its current location, which is at approximately 49th and Old Cheney. And in general, looking a little bit broader, places for people to take their dogs during the day, and also if they're going to board them, places for people to take them where they feel comfortable, that they're going to be adequately taken care of. It's really become more prominent in Lincoln over the past five to 10 years, and these uses have integrated very well within those other commercial uses that are in the area where these are located. And Camp Bow Wow is no exception. And as Mr. Will indicated, the purpose of the application is for the outdoor area. That's why we're here today. And I will also say upfront that the vast majority of the time the dogs spend is indoors. This is not a primarily outdoor use operation. Most of the time is spent indoors. That being said, the outdoor area is still a necessary part of the use of the property and the use- and the use of the business. The, as Mr. Will indicated, the outdoor area is to be located in the back of the building. Uh, beyond it is that railroad right-of-way, there's the remaining parking lot. Um, it, it does not face any, uh, businesses. It, it only, it's only to the back of businesses. Uh, and, uh, the outdoor area does, that we're proposing, does involve the removal of six parking stalls, but we're still in excess of the parking requirement for this property, so that's not an issue here. Uh, the conditions associated with the, uh, outdoor area will be met. Uh, those are requirements under the ordinance, and those will be met. Uh, this is a daytime operation, and there's boarding, but, uh, the, the hours where they can be outdoors will be met. Um, in terms of the fencing, I do have a few things to provide. Uh, there, there is going to be an opaque fence. And this is the outdoor area. The outdoor area, uh, as you'll note, has separation points and, in between the edges, and that, uh, with some gates, and that's by design. It's not just a free-for-all. It's not just let dogs outside into one large area and let them run. They are limited to their specific spaces, and there is a staff member, one of the requirements is that they be accompanied by staff members. Not only would that be met, they will be met within each of those four areas. So if they're, just, if there's a, if there's dogs over here and dogs over here, having a person right here is, is not the way it's going to work. It's going to be, if there's an air, dogs in any of these outdoor areas, there will be a staff member with them at each time. Six-foot fence is required, uh, under the ordinance. It's, it's opaque fence. Uh, we're going to have an eight-foot fence that's opaque, and it's going to look similar to that. And then, not only that, in between those areas which I identified, this is what it's going to be. So not only is there screening for the outer edges, there's screening internally. Certainly you have to have some ability to be able to see back and forth, but there is, uh, there is fencing in between as well. And, uh, the outdoor area is not located within the setback area. For, for that to occur, we would have to ask the Planning Commission to reduce the setback requirement to allow for the outdoor area to occur within that space, and we are not asking for that. Uh, so that is not part of the application. During its eight and a half years of operation, Camp Bow Wow has had no complaints related to noise. And if this proposed, proposed facility at, in the West Trade Center, it's, the outdoor area is going to be half of the size of its current, uh, operation. And another thing to keep in mind is that Camp Bow Wow is a national franchise. There are franchise requirements associated with its use. It is a, there are detailed plans in place for staffing and operation. If there's, I know one of the opposition letter talked about smells. Dog waste is picked up immediately. Uh, there's a process where a minimum of four times a week, the outdoor area is sprayed off clean with environmentally safe materials. Uh, the indoor area is cleaned in this fashion daily. The outdoor equipment, the indoor equipment is cleaned regularly. Um, and in addition, uh, going back to it becoming more prominent within the past, uh, five to ten years, the, there are live cams available, so the owners can check in on the dogs during the day, uh, so big brother's always watching to make sure that, uh, that their pets are being taken care of. When you take everything into account, uh, when you take into account the location, uh, in the Trade Center West, when you take into account the business operation, uh, the staffing, the fact that the outdoor area is not the primary use associated with the boarding facility, uh, the fencing provided, the location of the outdoor area in relation to other businesses, the significant buffer associated with the railroad tracks, um, this is an ideal, ideal fit and ideal location. Um, there's, again, going back to noise, there is, uh, this is near an arterial street, a major arterial, Fifty-sixth Street, there are four lanes. Uh, the, the opposition letter you received last week, uh, that, um, not only is it to the back of the business, but if you go to the front of the business, um, so you have the building buffer in between, uh, the outdoor area and, uh, the opposition, uh, it, they're located closer to Old Cheney Road, and they're also located, uh, closer to Raising Cane's, uh, which, uh, has significant operations and, and, you know, and obviously the, the food associated with that. I would be happy to answer any questions, uh, you may have.
Questions?
Can you estimate how many dogs will be outside at a time?
It's tough to do that, and the reason why is because even though, the, the difficult part, um, I understand why it's worded that way, but the difficult part about the ordinance is that any one time. And the reality is, is that when you, uh, let dogs out, uh, they have, in the morning or in the evening, they have to go to the bathroom, and they're all going to have to go about the same time. Um, I would say that it's similar to saying, uh, to a commercial operation can, that has, that uses trucks or heavy vehicles as part of their business, can you tell me how many vehicles are going to be going in and out during the day? Uh, it's, it's hard to do. But I think the, the point of it is, is that it's intermittent, it's not the focus of it, and, uh, and we are doing it in a location that is as good as we can do, and we're providing the screening in the best way possible.
Michael, did you have a question? No, I didn't.
Um, I have another question, sorry. So are they going to have two locations then, or are they moving?
They're moving. Okay. Thank you. Is there testimony in support for this item? Is there testimony in opposition for this item? Please come forward. State your name and address before you...
Hi, my name is Diane Crawford. Um, I represent Crawford Realty, owner of the building that he was talking about that is directly, um, directly to the east of, um, this proposed kennel. Our business address is one thirty-five Lakewood, Crawford Realty. And we own the, uh, the building where Cornerstone Travel is currently housed, fifty-eight fifteen South Fifty-eighth Street, Suite D. And I guess my concern, I'm glad to hear that they're going to have a nice fence, that's nice, um, but the thing is, um, if you look at the other kennels in and around Lincoln, they are all on the exterior of Lincoln. There's only one Camp Bow Wow that is within the city, you know, closer to residences and businesses. Where it is now is a more of an industrial use area. This new location is more office, and I do not want my property values to go be reduced because this kennel is right in the back of my building, so that's it. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Applicant rebuttal?
Very briefly, um, there are a few other facilities that, uh, that are located, uh, within the city. Twenty-nineteen N Street is one example. Uh, that outdoor area, um, is much larger than the one that, uh, we are proposing, uh, and that is closer to Union Bank, uh, than, uh, the opposition testimony. And the other one, which is a little bit tougher for me to be specific on, because it's, uh, under construction, is Fourteenth Street and Infinity, which is just north of Yankee Hill Road. Uh, that is near, uh, dentist office, orthodontist, uh, other office uses. So th- this is not, uh, blazing a trail by any means. Uh, this is, uh, just a continuation of a trend that has been successful up to this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know how many employees they intend to employ there?
I don't know the specifics, but generally they have, uh, one and, one staff member per fifteen dogs. Um, and so, and that can increase, decrease, it just kind of depends on the timing, but that's, that's a general rule. I mean, again, because you're, I, I think the members of the commission can take some comfort in the fact that this is a, a national franchise brand, and franchise requirements, for those who've dealt with franchises before, are very specific to make sure that, uh, that places are adequately staffed, adequately constructed, and, uh, and operated efficiently.
Okay. Other questions? Any other questions? Okay, are we ready to entertain a motion? Move approval. Go ahead.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Moved?
I'll move.
And seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Is there discussion?
I'll go with...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this, this setup here. We've done these, um, kennels inside the city before, and I think the controls are very appropriate for the amount of dogs that are going to be out there, and noise will be kept to a limit. Um, in addition, I, I like the fact that there is extra buffer between the buildings when you throw in the, the distance from the, uh, just crossing the railroad tracks there. I like the fence they're going to be putting in. I think it's high quality, it's not just a wood fence, it's going to look bad over times, and, um, I think it'll be a good use and it'll be a good fit.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree too. I, I, uh, I think the railroad right-of-way, uh, is, is an important factor here, and I do appreciate the additional information that you provided, Derek, regarding the fencing and staffing. Are we ready to vote? Please call the roll.
This is, uh, for a special permit, ten thirteen K. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval, as moved. Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, the next item is county special permit, is item one point five, county special permit number one six zero four four to allow for a riding stable and private stable, um, property generally located at sixty-four fifty South One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street. This is final action unless appealed, um, to the County Board within seven days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
See none.
Tom Chaka, planning staff. Uh, we did receive one letter and email in opposition, uh, from Sharon Harkins at sixty-three fifty South One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street. Some of her concerns were to the amount of animal waste, um, this could, um, have, and the potential for it to drain into a pond that is on the west side of One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street, um, she also had concerns with additional traffic and safety of vehicles on One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street. This is a county special permit for a private stable, riding stable for Winsong Equotherapy. It's located on One Hundred and Forty-Eighth between Old Cheney and Pine Lake Road. This is, this is the area of the special permit. Um, I believe the letter in opposition is from this property here directly to the north. And you can, I think that, I believe this is the pond that she is referring to.
Are, those are lot lines? Those are long, thin lots?
These are long, thin lots, yes. Under county zoning, both, um, let me back up a minute. This kennel also, or kennel, this riding stable, um, also will have a apartment unit within it, which will be for a caretaker, and that's up in this area. Here's the, uh, riding arena, and then their site plan shows twelve, uh, horse stalls here. The dwelling unit and the riding stable are both permitted uses under the ag zoning and the county zoning. The reason for the special permit is that you can't have two main uses on the lot without the special permit. So in this case, the permitted use is for the dwelling unit and then the special permit for the riding stable. If they wanted to eliminate the apartment, then they could just do this by right. They don't need the special permit. I did contact Health Department to see if they had any issues or oversight as far as waste concerns, and they do not. Um, they don't have any, um, kind of jurisdiction or oversight for that. John Chess at Health Department said the only one who may had some type of oversight would be Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, and that would only be if there was some, probably some problem draining into, uh, water, waterways. Um, the site plan, just give you a picture of the overall site. One Hundred and Forty-Eighth is here, so they're putting it towards the way back off of One Hundred and Forty-Eighth. Um, this is the actual building, and then let me zoom in here. And I think, okay, these were past, hard to read, but these are pasture areas, and this is an outside, uh, arena. I guess that's all with any questions?
Questions for Tom? No? Thank you. Testimony from the applicant? No? Okay. Is there a testimony in support of this item? Is there testimony in opposition of this item? Please come forward.
I've never did this before, but we live right across the road from this property.
Can you, uh, state your name and address? An address?
Sixty-four oh one South One Hundred and Forty-Eighth.
Thanks.
And, uh, we do have a drainage problem from that property draining into our property. There's a culvert underneath the road. We're getting a lot of silt. I've talked to the ASC and the NRD, and of course, they're going to contact these people that bought the property to be able to see what they could do to detention the material on the other side of the road. Uh, I talked to the vice president of this the other day on the phone, and she said that there was not going to be no private kenn, uh, stables. There was just going to be six horses, and of course, I agreed to that, that's, if you get a lot of horses over there, you're going to have problems. And One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street is very busy now. It, it's just considered like a highway, you might say, because there's more traffic on there than there's ever been, and I've lived out there twenty-two years. But, uh, I'm not against this stable, don't get me wrong, but not for, to have extra horses to lease out areas for to board those horses. That's the only thing I'm against. And of course, the drainage as far as the compost and stuff, you know, it, it's just, it has to be cleaned up or whatever. That's all I have.
Questions? Okay. Any additional questions for staff?
I have a couple. Is One Hundred and Forty-Eighth Street paved? It is, right?
Oh, yeah.
What kind of volume do we have to have before we have like a turn lane or a passing lane or something like that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Tom, is there going to be outdoor, I guess, uh, are the horses going to be boarded indoors all the time, or are they going to be outside?
Well, I wish the applicant was here. Um, I, all I can do is go by what's on the site plan that showed the in, inside boarding. I was thinking that it would probably be inside mostly. I don't know for sure if they're having twelve horses, I'm just saying the site plan show, shows twelve stalls. Their letter didn't specify how many horses they would have, it just said that, um, let's see. And it talked about serve, they will serve approximately thirty riders a week, each ride is for thirty minutes, will mostly take place over two to three time periods, um, projected to grow to fifty to sixty riders a week, um, if fundraising is successful. Uh, basically what they do is they're, uh, they work with, um, people with disabilities for therapeutic, they call it therapeutic horseback riding. horseback riding. Currently, their hours of operation are Monday evenings and sometimes Saturday mornings. That could, could expand. With this special permit, we didn't put any conditions as far as hours of operation or anything like that. I think mainly we were looking at this as it's an allowed use. It's an agric, you know, quasi-agriculture use. This is agriculture zoning. So we felt this was a appropriate special permit.
So with regard to runoff and drainage, they'll be subject to all the usual restrictions of the AG zone?
I guess it would be no different than, you know, a farmer that has cattle or-
And the only reason we're talking about this is they're going to have an apartment for a caretaker?
Correct.
One, just one question. So if, if it weren't for the apartment, there would not be a question at all about how many stalls they would have for how many horses. It would be an allowed use however big they wanted it to be as long as they stayed within the setback?
Correct.
Okay.
This would not be before you if it wasn't for the apartment.
Why is the apartment considered a primary use and not?
Because there's not a special permit for the dwelling, but there is a special permit for riding, private stable, riding stables is what they call it in the zoning code.
Is not the caretaker's quarters-
Well, they're calling it-
The, to the stable?
But there's not a, in the zoning code, there's not an exemption for a caretaker to be allowed with, with the stable.
Okay, other questions? Are we ready to move? Move approval? Second?
Is that Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think Lynn seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion?
Well, as you might have guessed from my line of questioning just now, this sounds like really the only reason we're talking about it is because there will be a caretaker living on site. And that doesn't affect the neighbors' concerns virtually at all. Otherwise, if there weren't that, this could be there without it ever coming before us at all. And so we're not here to talk about the presence of the stables and the riding arena per se. And I'm, I'm comfortable with the restrictions and, and controls that are in place for the AG zone for what is essentially an agricultural use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the map here. It looks like right now, a lot of it is farm ground, probably erodible. And I'm thinking if they're putting in pastures and, and a manicured area around it, not knowing the complete site plan, but I think there's a probability there's, that there's going to be less silt runoff of the property. So I think that'd be positive.
Other comments?
I just wish the owner or the applicant was here so that we could get some more stuff nailed down. But I, I agree with Michael. I mean, if it weren't for that apartment, I mean, this would be an allowed use, so.
I thought that too. There were some questions I wanted to ask the applicant, but I kind of looked closer at the application and I saw that the answers are there, yeah.
And I agree. And I, I actually think that the apartment, the dwelling unit is, is in this case, a good thing as an additional use. So I'm in favor of the, of the motion. Please call the roll.
Okay, and this would be for conditional approval of county special permit number 16044. Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Okay, moving on to item 4.1 under special permit, special permit number 300C to amend an existing special permit to allow for reconstruction of a non-conforming facility and to increase the allowable square footage from 22,300 square feet to 32,000 square feet, an additional increase in allowable parking from 57 stalls to 88 stalls, and an increase in allowable members residing on the premises from 80 members to 88 members plus a house mother on property generally located at 3601 Apple Street. This is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this consent, or on this item?
I see none.
Good afternoon. George Wusseloff, planning staff. The location where we're at, this is, adjust this here. So Apple Street, Idlewild Drive, the park, the existing farmhouse fraternity building, which is on the west side of the special permit boundary at 3601 Apple Street. And then there's also this residential house property at 3639 Apple Street, which the farmhouse fraternity owns, which is included in the special permit boundary. And so in 1998, that was the last special permit previous to this one, where they were approved for an expansion to 22,300 square feet, 57 parking stalls, and 80 members residing on the premises. So this special permit would increase those numbers to 32,000 square feet as far as buildable area, 88 parking stalls, and 88 members plus a house mother residing on the premises. And the basic reasoning behind this is that the fraternity has outgrown their current building and they wish to upgrade their facilities. Getting back to that house at 3639 Apple Street, that is located in the East Campus Neighborhood Historic District. So that will necessitate review by the Historic Preservation Commission, which it was reviewed preliminarily at the September 15th meeting of the commission. And they forwarded a recommendation to you with conditional approval of the special permit, sub, subject to the applicant submitting final design for their review. I would mention at that meeting, the president of the East Campus Community Organization, Paul Johnson, was in attendance and noted that the neighborhood group supports the, the current proposal, which, a little more background information there, two years ago in 2014, there was actually a prior concept which had the building located on the east side of the property. And I'll just show the current proposed site plan here. The proposed site plan has the new construction on the west side. There was a prior proposal to have it on the east side, which generated a number of concerns from the, the neighborhood and the organization. So this proposal is essentially a reboot or a new proposal from the one two years ago, and the neighborhood is supportive of it. I would mention just briefly, the parking requirement under Lincoln Municipal Code for a fraternity is 0.75 spaces per resident. So 66 parking spaces are required. The applicant is requesting through the special permit an increase from 57 allowable stalls to 88 stalls, but as part of the site plan, they are only showing 80 site, 80 parking stalls, excuse me. You'll note in the staff report, there are 12 conditions for site-specific approval. One of those pertains to landscaping, that the applicant would submit a landscaping plan that meets the design standards to the satisfaction of the planning director prior to building approval. And that would include landscaping versus the residential properties to the west and east. So the recommendation is conditional approval. And I can answer any questions you may have of staff at this time.
Questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. I know that they're over the, the parking requirement, but on their presentation stuff, it says 79 stalls. And then in the report, it says 80. So I just kind of wanted to get clarification.
Sure. I, and the applicant can, can clarify further, but on this particular plan here, not the colored plan, there were, I believe I counted 80 stalls. It's kind of in that range.
Is there any historical significance to the existing fraternity building? I'm assuming that the historic preservation would have noted that.
Yeah, they would have noted that. I believe the existing building dates to the 1950s. I believe that information was provided as part of the history. I believe 1954 is when it was constructed.
Other questions? Okay. Testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Monzu, architect with Leo Daley in Omaha at 8600 Indian Hills Drive. Also a farmhouse alum, helping them work on this project. I think George covered a lot of the intent of the project. The intent here is for the fraternity to do a replacement project that better suits the needs of their current residents as well as future students coming to the university to improve technology for the house and make infrastructure improvements basically for the house. We're also looking to improve the amount of on-site or off-street parking for the actual property, which is one of the concerns of the neighborhood, and, and also create a more, a house that addresses more of the amenities college students are looking for nowadays. So the question about the number of parking stalls, reason we are asking for 88 was so that we were not in a situation where if we had enough stalls or we had situations where we're putting more cars in the lot, that we were not at a problem to have the required number of members could have a car there. We're providing between 79 and 80. Our site plan has been being tweaked a little bit. So we're going to be between 79 to 81 stalls in there by the time we're done dealing with landscape questions and things like that. So I say the only question, or the, you had asked about the historical significance of the house, the actual-
Not of the house, the, well, the fraternity building.
Of the fraternity, the historical neighborhood actually borders it. So I'm going to put this as a more graphic site plan, which is probably the one you were looking at. So the historical neighborhood kind of runs along here and then down this side, or down right about, right about here. So the house that's in that, that we're taking down is part of that, but the actual fraternity is, is not. So. I think one of the other questions that we had, George mentioned the landscape requirement about keeping, it also addressed keeping a certain number of existing trees. I'd say we will do what we can to work around existing trees where appropriate. There are some cases that will, there are a few that conflict with parking and things we're trying to develop on the site. But the intent is to create more of a, a landscape buffer around the perimeter, which has been discussed with the neighborhood as a, as a goal for, for both groups. The other item, a conditional item on here was number 1.6, which we would ask, I guess, to be stricken as a requirement to approve this. That, that issue was mentioning that the dumpsters that were shown here, the intent was to create a service yard on the west side of the house, which is away from most of the single-family dwellings. There are three apartment buildings that are on this to the, to the west side of the house. We were planning on a service drive for deliveries and trash removal that is adjacent to the kitchen and to keep that truck traffic off of dealing with the parking lot and away from the side of the property where the resident, the single-family residences are. And we would keep that traffic right here. The closest apartment building is this unit right here, and we're about 50 feet from that in terms of where we plan to keep the dumpsters so that from the kitchen area, we can come right out and trash trucks can come in and remove those. So that, to bring that to the backside of the property here, functionally on the site in terms of how we access it and then how we remove things from the property is, is a concern that we have if we have to fulfill that. So we had asked that that be reconsidered.
Where are the dumpsters located currently?
Currently on property, I think they have some, they have one back here and occasionally they've had one over roughly about right here.
Okay. Other questions?
One, one question. When the fraternity has events or parties or whatever, and has some overflow parking, where do those guests typically park now?
Most of the events they will have will be family events and most of, and will have visitors for studying and whatnot. Most, the on-street parking that is here is used. They also do use the lot. The lot is not necessarily assigned parking. They also do not have, every member does not own a vehicle. So even if they're at a number of 88, at any one time, there may only be 78 to 80 stalls or cars needed in the lot. On parent days and things like that, along Apple Street and Idlewild out here, there's on-street parking that is utilized.
So do you anticipate the increase in parking to alleviate some of, of that?
Right, right now, some of the members use on-street parking. So moving them, those into our lot will free up additional on-street parking. There was discussions with the neighborhood association about whether or not we could eliminate on-street parking and whether or not that could be controlled. And really, the decision, I think, came down to ultimately neither group can control that. If the fraternity is not using it, somebody will be using it. But ultimately, we're trying to keep as much of the parking for the residents on our off-street lot that we're creating as possible.
Thank you. If testimony in support of this item?
Paul Johnson, and I am president of the neighborhood, East Campus Neighborhood Association, 1450 North 41st Street. We've been working with the organization with the farmhouse. This last year, we've had working groups with their building, building committee and coming to an agreement on it. We didn't really like the, the, we were losing one house out of our, out of the historic district, but we felt that the increased parking, right now they have 54, 56 stalls in the lot with 80 members. And if increasing the members, we worked from 92 down to 88 members on an increase. And the additional parking, we thought was a, was enough of a plus that losing that house was not going to be a major problem. We've had meetings with the board. We've had meetings with the, with the neighborhood as, as a whole. I was pleasantly surprised on what neighborhood meeting as a whole, we had fewer questions, problems, or anything else. So I think that the neighborhood is, is pretty well for it. We haven't seen final design plans. There's still working on those. So, but we're, the two groups are going to be working together to go and, you know, get a building that everybody likes. But we think that the, that the additional members is fine and the additional parking area is fine. The, oh, a question on the, the dumpsters. I think that if they, if they move the trash and everything clear to the back of the lot, then you're going to be having more truck traffic through that traffic lot. You're going to be losing parking stalls. So we think, I think that the, you know, the, the access drive is probably a good plan too.
Questions? Thank you. Is there any additional testimony in support? Is there testimony in opposition of the item? Are there any additional staff questions?
Yes.
George?
George, how do you come down on this question of condition 1.6?
Concerning the dumpster?
Mm-hmm.
I'll just put this map graphic back on display here. The Mopac, Ray Road, former railroad right-of-way or trail, right-of-way distance is 50 feet. So if, if the dumpsters were placed in the south side of the proposed parking lot, then you'd be at a greater distance as far as the, the noise factor. That's the basic premise behind the, the condition is nuisance or noise from service vehicles that would be in closer proximity to the apartments versus the west versus the other residential properties.
Okay. Other questions? Lynn?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the apartments, aren't they using dumpsters as well? So isn't it kind of the same noise that's going on?
It's a house. I think it's a conversion.
I thought it was apartments to the west.
I thought it was a duplex.
Fourplex.
Yeah, fourplex sounds about right.
It is apartments is the land use that is identified to the west, yes.
Okay. Do you have a question for George?
That, that's what I was gonna, yeah.
Same thing.
Okay. Okay. Applicant rebuttal?
No, I guess my only other comment-
No, I guess my only other comment would be, just to let everybody know, the intent here is to get the special use permit approved to make sure that the project we're developing could continue at, at that side. There are still details that we're working out, and we do plan on submitting final plans for permit and review. We also will be going back to the Historic Preservation Commission for review of our image drawings and such, so, but this first step was to make sure that the size of project we wanted to do was able to continue, so that's really the purpose. There will be other reviews, and we plan to address some of these concerns as we're moving forward, that, that, those comments related to the dumpsters alone, we had a real concern about.
So, you'll have ongoing dialogue with the neighborhood?
Yes.
Association and planning staff?
Absolutely. The plan is, we have, the Building Association for the fraternity, we're, we're going through a design process. We've had communication with the Echo Group, the East Campus Community Organization, to update them at various points of our project, take some of their comments, address concerns as we're moving along, yes.
Okay. You have a question? Tracy?
Oh, I kinda have a question for staff, I guess. So, is the planning department okay with us striking one point six, or if we leave it in there, can it be changed in the future by like an administrative amendment, or?
I would have to defer to Steve on the possibility of administrative amendment. I'm not sure.
On this particular point, if the planning commission leaves the condition in, we would not by later administrative amendment and remove it then, because it was specifically reviewed by the planning commission. The apartments to the west are, look like they're fourplexes, they do not have any rear dumpsters, they don't, they have grass in their backyards, they don't have a rear service area.
Steve, could we put a, an additional condition on there of a certain time after which that dumpster could be emptied?
That company, kind of operational thing is very difficult for us to enforce over time. Their garbage service changes and starts picking up at six AM in the morning, and it's difficult for us to then, if we get a complaint, to tell them they need to switch trash services to get to a different trash company, so it's, it's a little bit more of a challenge. But we felt like the current site plan, which has it more centrally located, it was better to have it there internal to their own site versus placing it to the west. Yes, it's an apartment complex, but there are four, are more residents living in that building, and we felt like moving the noise and things toward them wasn't appropriate as a part of the site plan.
Okay. Anything else?
I, yeah, this may be for staff or for you. Does, how many stalls would the dumpster eliminate?
I, I, I'm not able to answer that right off the top of my head. I mean, we would need to create turning radiuses and such for those service vehicles to get through that lot, and so it would, it would impact that layout and take some off, but without going through it, I'm not sure exactly how many. I mean, it wouldn't be, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, it'd be a few, but I don't, I don't know.
Does the current site plan have the, have them backing in to the trash area? There is no turning radius, and so that was our thought, is that it would be the same exact kind of turning movement for the trash, they would back in and go straight out. The current plan does not have a turning radius for the trash service. They come in and they go straight back out.
So, what is being mentioned is, yes, we, we would be bringing trucks in and bringing them out. Here, you could do that, but this area on this side of this is, is meant to be kind of a, a member entry point, visitor entry point as well, as well as most of the trash that is generated comes from kitchen and food service, which is all on, on this side of the house. So, I mean, if it's, if it's a requirement to, to follow that, then we have to deal with it on our site plan. But we think from organizationally on our site and from where our neighbors are and the distance we were maintaining from that apartment building, I did, we did not see that as, as much of a concern.
Thank you. Entertained a motion? Move approval with staff conditions?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? That was Michael and Lynn, by the way.
Got it, thanks.
I'm, I'm inclined to be okay with striking one point six. I think that no matter if the, I mean, I'm thinking about my trash service on my street, I mean, I hear them backing up and, I mean, and we don't have any apartments or anything, I just, I don't think that, um, that's gonna create that much of a noise nuisance additionally for this neighbor to the west, and if the neighborhood's okay with it, then I think I'm okay with it, too. But I'd be interested in hearing what my other commissioner, fellow commissioners think.
Well, the reason I didn't put that in my motion was largely because I am, uh, sensitive to the idea that, well, to the, to the idea that as a unit, this, the farmhouse should keep their services internal instead of forcing them over to the side where they're kind of, I mean, it's not an encroachment in a geographic sense, but in a sort of conceptual sense, now you're pushing the noise and the smell toward the neighbors. But it is fifty feet away, and I can, I can see that, and I can also, I also know that trash, you know, garbage trucks go up and down the alley behind my house, and I hear them, and it's a fact of living in the city, so I, I'm on the fence with regard to that, and when I'm on the fence, I tend to be more conservative.
Other discussion? I, I don't think we can take any more testimony at this point.
I'm, I'm on the fence as well, but I, from having lived both in residential and urban environments, it's a whole lot of more sound when it's a dumpster with, big dumpster with bottles of glass and other things being emptied into a truck than, than a residential garbage can, so I'm, I'm kind of, I'm on the fence, too, but I'm, I, I would feel much more comfortable if I had the, the neighbors of that adjacent, um, living in that adjacent property here stating that they're comfortable.
Well, it's, it's an interesting problem, because what the neighborhood is telling us is they would, they're more comfortable with having that over there on the side if they get the parking, so that they don't have to deal with the on-street parking.
Yeah.
Does that create more parking though where the trash containers used to be?
Well, that was sort of what I thought, is there a more creative approach where we can move some of the parking over there? Since we don't have a final site plan, it seems like there are opportunities for that sort of thing.
You know, at this point, I don't wanna sit here and micromanage what they're doing with the site plan, because it's, it's definitely out of my field, maybe not Dennis', but definitely out of mine. And I think that at this point, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Maya, said that the noise from those things dumping out with glass bottles and such is, is quite a bit, and I think we should at least take a stab at, have them take a stab at moving it to the back.
Yeah, I'm inclined to support the motion just because of where we are in the process or where the design is, is in the process, and if, if we put this condition in, I think that everybody can come together and find a creative way to make it all work. No question that there's maybe a little tweak to the site plan that has to be done, but I think, I think that's the better way to go, in my opinion, right now.
Um, kinda getting away from the, from the dumpster issue, I just want to commend farmhouse, working with the neighborhood, you guys have had a lot of great conversations, and I really, excuse me, I really appreciate that, being involved, and that way we have a win-win for everybody, and I think that, that'll come about with this issue, this little minute issue we have, too, so I just wanted to, to give a shout out to you guys.
Very good.
Just wanted to add, I, I understand there is noise associated with dumpsters, but looking at the access, it's a lot easier to get into an area where there's not a lot of cars and a lot of things to hit, that's something to consider, too.
I thought about that, too, and when I'm looking at the site plan, I think they could easily extend this, you know, that driveway clear down to the south, so that they would have two driveways. I think that there's something they can do.
Okay. Other comments? If not, please call the roll.
Okay, this is on special permit number three hundred C. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. And Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, the next item is under continued public hearing and administrative action, which is item five point one, special permit one six zero four one, for the sale of alcohol for consumption, both on and off the premises on property generally located at two fifty-two North One Hundred and Thirty-fourth Street. This is final action by the planning commission, unless appealed to the city council within fourteen days, staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
Yes, I had a conversation with one of my coworkers, Mark Jacobson, who just shared his concerns with me and asked about how, testifying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Brian Will, planning department. Recall that you're at the last meeting, September fourteenth, held a public hearing, there were several questions raised, and so that public hearing was continued on, until today. I note that you've all been forwarded all the correspondence the planning department has received. I would mention, though, this one, latest one that we had gotten, just because it was so late, I wasn't sure if you had a chance to read it or not, it's from Matthew Marquardt, seven forty-five Sunset Boulevard, Palmyra, Nebraska. His son attends a daycare that we heard about at the last hearing in the dwelling just to the east of this. He has similar concern to other parents relative to mixing alcohol with discharge of firearms on the subject property. I'd like to note, so, several questions were raised at the end. Planning staff, myself, didn't have answers to all those. Today, we do have our county sheriff, Terry Wagner, here in the audience today, if there's any questions for him. We also have Rick Pato from the city law department, if there's any questions in that regard. So, I think trying to, trying to understand where the planning commission was at last hearing, some of the questions that were raised, staff did prepare a brief memo for you, and what we did, I think based on our understanding, we put together a set of conditions that if you choose to, you could, you could use as recommended conditions of approval. Maybe just walking through them, just generally, just for the audience so that they're aware. The first condition is, involves adding a note to the site plan, which states that alcohol is only served to patrons who are finished firing, and no one is allowed to discharge firearms on the property for twenty-four hours after consuming alcohol. The second note states that, add a note to the site plan, saying that the establishment of an indoor range must be approved by administrative amendment, the special permit, and the range is established consistent with what we understand to be the applicable requirement. So, there was concern about perhaps indoor shooting, this was put together to address that. The third one, there's two options here, it's one or the other is the intent of it. The first one is add a note stating that there shall be no discharge of firearms outside the building on the property as long as a special permit for alcohol is in effect. So, that effectively prohibits outdoor shooting while the special permit is in effect, if it's, if it's approved. The second one is an alternative, says add a note to the site plan, which states establishment of an outdoor range must be approved by an administrative amendment to this special permit, so just saying if there is outdoor shooting, making sure that it's therefore established consistent with game and parks and our, whatever those applicable guidelines are. The second part of this memo, then, is just in response to questions raised by Commissioner Core. She had several questions, and so I just went ahead and added them on at the end of this for then the benefit of the rest of the planning commissioners, so you could see those answers as well. So, I guess with that, maybe just to kinda pick up where we left off, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this, or if you had questions for myself or others here, be happy to do that.
Michael.
Brian, does, do, does option three B include the prohibition of shooting on the property in the absence of the establishment of an outdoor shooting range?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Well, three A says you can't shoot on the property.
Right, no outdoor, as long as there's alcohol.
Says if you establish an outdoor shooting range, which is, three B is presented as an or.
Yes.
If you establish an outdoor shooting range, it will have to be through administrative amendment to the special permit and be in compliance with various agencies' guidelines. Option B here does not say you can't shoot, it just says you can't establish a range.
Right, well, the debate, we had a debate last, the last hearing about just what exactly is going on, and I think when I was asked, I, my response was, I'm not aware that there is a range in operation here. There was some...
But there doesn't need to be a range, because it's a county property and they can just go out, I mean, anyone can go out on their property and discharge firearms, because they're not in the city limits, right?
Correct, well, so I think the first one is saying is, okay, if that's, we're talking about the establishment of a range in B, okay? The first one says, option A says, no outdoor shooting. So, you have an option, either no shooting, or if you are going to have outdoor shooting, I guess what we're saying, establishing a range, okay, it's gonna be organized, it's gonna be, it's gonna operate under, you know, some, you know, some, some, some bona fide constraints, then it's option B.
Okay.
Rick Pato from city law, I think probably that or should be an unless might be an appropriate
That sounds like what I wanna hear. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, so just to clarify, at least for my sake, there's a, there was a, an email from Derek Broman that was a response to the news story that ran on TV, I believe, but it was forwarded to the planning department, and they're, in there, he asks, the area where shooting takes place is on a different lot than where the liquor license is being applied for, why should this shooting even be discussed? So, this, these conditions that we're talking about here in the memo, what area do they pertain to and do they govern the area where they've been doing the target practice that started this whole debate?
We're not telling you one or the other. Let me, let me make a distinction here. So, this is the boundary of the special permit, and so reading the email, I think what the applicant is saying is, well, we're shooting up here, we're not shooting here. Well, I don't know that there was a distinction made at the, you know, at the la, at the public hearing, if the concern is shooting everywhere, I take it to be that, okay? And the own, the applicant does own all this property, so I would say that that's, um, shooting in the area is a concern, there will be none, or if there is, it's under these conditions, okay? So, I guess to answer your question, that's up to the planning commission to some degree.
So, but could, there's no legal issue with, with imposing restrictions on an area where the liquor license, if that, if that's what's, what's driving this, if the, if it's a different area than where...
I think what we're talking about is imposing conditions on the special permit for alcohol, and if it occurs, these other things, these other things shall occur. So, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going above and beyond that or adding additional requirements, I'm, I think we're saying, if you're going to sell, sell alcohol, it's under these conditions.
And the reason that makes sense is because it's the same owner of the same lots?
Yes.
So, what happens if he sells that lot, the north lot?
Then it's, then it's not an issue.
But if someone is shooting up there?
Yeah, but there's...
If, if he sold it, wouldn't it be a divided, subdivided?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no way at that point that, um, how, what am I trying to say? We're, we're dealing with this applicant, this special permit, these are the requirements applied to this applicant, this special permit. If he sells that property, it's, I mean, it's just, if he sold it to dance, somebody else purchased it, it's difficult to control what occurs there.
So, what I, I guess what I've, I've been looking at this is, all these restrictions will apply towards the dotted in area, the dotted around area, and anything outside of it does not necessarily apply to these restrictions.
I would, I would agree with that, we're only talking about the boundaries of the special permit.
We're only talking about the boundaries of the special permit can be regulated. So the property he owns to the north is not covered by these potential requirements. And, you know, the difficulty of this situation is you're, but for alcohol, you wouldn't be here in the first place, you know, if this is a restaurant or anything. So there wouldn't be even the regulation on the lot before. So it's, it's probably just a lack of, of good requirements as to discharging weapons within a certain distance from occupied dwellings or other situations. And it's just, it's a safety, general safety hazard that we're trying to regulate because he's asking for alcohol, which might enhance that, that same risk. So we felt that we could at least impose some requirements on the special permit boundaries, but beyond that, we, we didn't think we could.
Brian, on number two, isn't, it says here, establish an indoor range approved by administrative amendment. I thought that given the zoning, he could do that by right.
Yes. Yes, but what, what we're saying here is adding a note that says, but actually doing that will, will be done by administrative amendment.
Because of the special permit?
Yes, because of the special permit. At this point, it's not there and it may never be. But if it does come to be part of it by administrative amendment, then so presumably what we're saying is, before that administrative amendment would be approved, we'd have some sort of certification, verification, something that it meets the guidelines requirements we're talking about.
Brian, I, the map doesn't work on my iPad very well.
I'm sorry?
So I can't get the overlayment of the zoning on my device. So both lots are zoned industrial one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Everything in, in the white, including the mini storage, commercial building to the east, all of this is zone I one. It's this property that extends back in here and then to the north, that's, I believe, AG. So yeah, so I mean, there's a, there's a fairly large, or there's, there's a fairly large number of acres that are zoned industrial here.
Maybe we asked this before. Had he just applied for the liquor license and there was no guns mentioned outside? And then a year later, he decided he wanted to put an outdoor range with, he, would it have happened?
No, it would be, it would be just like today. You're considering a special permit for on or off sale alcohol. There is no permit before you for discharge of firearms. So to answer your question, if this were approved, then a year from now, he wanted to establish, you know, some sort of range firing weapons, that would not come before you, no.
Right, I understand that, but the reason we're all asking these questions is because we now know that there could be firearms. Had we not known that, we would, it would have just probably.
I think so.
Went through.
Could be, yes.
Is it appropriate to have industrial zoning in this area anymore since?
Well.
Parker Hanafin isn't there anymore?
Well, the comprehensive plan with, I mean, in general terms, we try to keep that, you know, he's like within the city where we have the infrastructure and, and everything is supported. I mean, this is sort of unusual, but this plant dates back to the, I mean, I think the Cold War. I think it was fifty's, sixty's, the old Brunswick plant before the more former owner. And so you have both this facility, but then you have an established use adjacent to it, the mini storage, who I know that owner is deeply invested in, with what he has going on. So today, would we be out encouraging or supporting a change of zone to I one in locations like this? Well, generally, no, but this is a longstanding use of this location.
Michael.
Brian, I'm sort of speaking to the issue Ken raised a minute ago. The original staff report talks about intended uses, intended, intended future uses, which included shooting. So we're invited to consider that as part of this special permit package. It's not that this was raised as part of the testimony and we found out about it on the fly. This was involved, I assume this was in the original application. Is that right? The intended uses.
I'm talking about indoor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah, there was, I got to be honest, even after being at visits, I, I was, I was unaware that there was any discharge of weapons going on at this property. The neighbor to the east, they'd call me before the public hearing, told me that folks had been out shooting outside on the property. So that was my first awareness of it. But, but yes, understanding, talking to, talking to the applicant's designer about what, what is this application for? What is the, what is the bigger picture here? He described, well, long term, you know, it's establishing, you know, this restaurant, the off sale, but eventually the applicant has a retail store in town that either establishing perhaps a new one at this location with an indoor range was part of that. So, yeah, so our recommendation is, yes, based upon that is a potential, you know, potential future use, yes.
Okay. I guess I do have a question for the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Since he's here. Hello, how are you?
Good.
My question is, you've heard all this and you understand that we are maybe chasing our tails with regard to discharge of firearms in the county because it's simply allowed.
It happens all the time.
And the issue is, we have neighbors who are coming to us and saying, well, this is going on. We're worried about the alcohol coming in and the shooting going on outside. And that's an understandable concern. And my question for you is, when you're in close proximity as a neighbor to a place where firearms are being discharged and you have concerns about the safety, what are your options as the neighbor?
Well, first off, when you, when you say close proximity in the county, it's not like close proximity in the city. So the map that you were looking at on, on the screen here was about a half mile in, in distance. So you're looking at a, a, a large distance. The daycare, I would guess is in the range of two thirds of a mile to the east of, of this facility. So don't, don't get misled by the boxes, they're not city blocks, they are square miles. So that's the first thing to remember. There really are no laws prohibiting somebody in the county from going out and discharging a firearm in their backyard. If they're having a barbecue and they're having a beer and they're shooting guns, that's a, that's allowed. Now, they are liable for any damage it might cause or any injuries they might cause, but, but those, that is allowed. Now, you can't hunt within two hundred yards of an occupied dwelling. So if you're hunting, and there is some distinction between just target shooting and hunting, you can't, that's a game and parks regulation, you can't hunt within two hundred yards of an occupied dwelling. So that's six hundred feet clearly beyond the, this distance here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Can someone remind me before we get into testimony, did we put any conditions on continuing in public hearing? Okay, so we'll take testimony from the applicant now.
My name is Derek Broman, forty-nine thirty-one Sinclair Court. As far as the conditions go, I think that would pretty much address a commercial shooting range. And like I mentioned before, that's not what this is. And a couple of the people that shoot out there came to testify today to tell you a little bit about their background and the frequency that they're shooting, and that way you can get a better idea. And I think Brian pretty much addressed a lot of good points. And is there any more questions you had for me?
Okay, quick, yeah. Mr. Broman, I, last time we met, you mentioned that you were shooting, that was a bad choice of words. You, you mentioned that you were trying to achieve a concept like the Dallas Gun Club. And that's kind of an upscale situation with restaurant, bar and indoor and outdoor shooting, and I assume retail sales of firearms and associated equipment. My question is, I think, this is going to start out with a statement and then I'll ask a question. The statement is, I think neighbors and probably some of my fellow commissioners would be more comfortable if what we were seeing was that as an entire concept being brought forward. Have you given any thought to trying to develop the concept further and bring it forward as an entirety, you know, so we can see exactly how it's going to work and what's going to go on? I think you'd be likely, and I'm not, I'm not giving you advice, I'm just making a suggestion. If, if you needed time to develop that, I'm sure that you could persuade us to put it on indefinite pending while you worked that out. Is that something you've thought about?
Well, as I mentioned, the shooting range side of it, I would have to gauge and see if that's something that this area would support as far as memberships. Because if, if there's not enough membership, then it wouldn't work out. And the way I would do that would be by pre-selling membership to gauge it. And you would either receive a refund or you would be a member. And that's how it would be determined. So yeah, that, that's already planned. But the first step would be to get the retail operation there up and running. And then the next step would be the restaurant. And then probably at the same time would be gauging the interest in membership for a range. And then all that stuff would be public information.
Have you sold any memberships yet or have you started that process?
And I, I don't want to because I want it to be a really quick process to where it's thirty days, to where it's not something that's just really dragged out. And I mean, if you even look at just the procedure to get a building permit, I mean, there was, it took us five months just to get the, the permits to do what we're doing. So it's, it's really hard to give you definitive answers on, you know, there's a lot of building permit issues where, hey, we might not be able to do this, or we would have to do it this way. And depending on the cost of that, you know, that would influence it just like any other business.
Have you had a, sorry, go ahead. Have you had a chance to look at the memorandum and do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, I did. And I, I think that at this point, everybody that does shoot there, I wouldn't call it a range. It's just basically land in the county where someone's shooting. I think everybody that's done that on that property has superseded everything on that sheet. A couple of those guys are here to, to speak to that and you can ask them questions and they can give you answers.
Can you clarify for me, like, who, who is going out there and shooting? Are they, are they customers, are they friends, are they?
I, I sponsor a national shooting team and a lot of those guys live in different areas in Nebraska. And I would say there's fourteen people on the team. Less than half of them actually practice there. And when they do, it's usually one to two hours, maybe once or twice a week. And I know there's a couple of them that have only been there once, so, and it's just based upon their schedule.
Ken.
So it's, it's nothing that would resemble a commercial shooting range where you'd have shootings starting at eight AM and stopping at, you know, eight PM.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest, I don't like options two, three, or A or B because being a county property owner myself, I do go out and shoot. We go out and shoot guns, you know, once in a while we have a beer. It's, it's not commercial. But what are your thoughts about item, or condition one here, which states alcohol may only be served to patrons who are finished firing? What are your thoughts on that? It's a little different than being on your own personal property, it's more of a business.
If I were to do an indoor commercial range, I would probably have more regulation than that. And it would be more than what the NRA has. The NRA is more of a, in my view, a political organization than somebody that would set forth safety. I mean, they kind of have some general guidelines for people that are really inexperienced, but the people in this situation are very experienced and, you know, one of them was ranked sixtieth in the country. So, but, you know, as anybody would know, an accident could happen, but it's highly unlikely, you know, when somebody continues to have good habits and follow the proper procedures.
So you wouldn't have a problem with a kit, condition said no firing guns for twenty-four hours after alcohol?
I think that that's kind of a dangerous condition to have because depending on how much alcohol a person's consumed, you know, that, you know, may not be applicable. I, I would take another look at that.
Other questions?
How do you, when, when you have, I don't know what you want to call them. These, your team come out and shoot, how do you explain to them where your property ends and the, and the next property begins?
I showed them the same map that we were all just looking at. And that was another, you know, point, I'm glad she mentioned that in the email, you know, this is taking place on a separate lot. You know, my question to the commission is, every liquor license in the county, are they attached to these conditions also?
Well, no, because they don't come forward with an application that says we want to have shooting as well. They come forth and say.
You know, it's possible these restrictions to be moved forward too on any application that comes in in the county.
The, the shooting that we're discussing is not commercial. It's, it's private and it's on a different parcel.
Sure.
It's not on the license premises.
There's potential for an indoor range in the same place where the alcohol's at.
Yeah, and that, that would be separated too.
I think we've been told by City Legal that we're not going to be able to regulate shooting on the lot that's not attached to the special permit. I think that's what I heard from Rick Payo. So that's sort of off the table and you don't have to worry about it.
I guess I still have questions as to, I mean, do you tell these team members where they can and can't shoot? Like only on that other lot or are they, I mean?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of common sense things. Every time they shoot, they're usually shooting north. And if there's, the first thing they do is they check the surrounding area. Like if there was somebody in that field farming or anybody over there, they wouldn't shoot. And that's happened before where they went out to shoot, somebody was in the area and they decide it's not safe to shoot, we're not shooting today.
So that's a concrete building, right?
Yeah.
I, I think we're almost talking about two different things here because if somebody wants to go inside that concrete building after they drank too many beers, they're putting themselves in danger, they're really not putting the neighborhood in danger. Not that that's going to happen, but.
No, but as a business owner, I wouldn't allow it because of the liability.
Right, I understand that, but we seem to be talking a lot about neighborhood concerns.
Yeah.
But they're not be concerned about indoor shooting for the, for the safety of the neighborhood. So then when we talk about outdoor shooting, we're talking about something that's not even in this permit.
Right, right.
It's two different things.
But how, how do you feel, now that we know that we have to separate the lots and that the lot where you're doing the target practices, we're not allowed to impose restrictions on that? How do you feel about imposing the restriction of just on the lot where you're applying for the liquor permit? Of not being allowed to shoot there after you've been consuming alcohol? We're not talking about the target practice. How do you feel about that specific restriction?
I wouldn't want anyone to consume alcohol and, and fire firearms anywhere.
So would you be okay with that condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
The point is, these conditions don't come into place until an indoor shooting range comes in. Which apparently you would be following these regulations, actually you said earlier, beyond these regulations as far as your, your safety protocol.
Michael, do you have a question?
Well, I, the, the, the conditions that we, that, that Brian shared with us include discussion of an outdoor range presumably within the area of the special permit, should that ever come to pass.
Right.
And I assume that would also include the potentiality of a, a test range for the gunsmith shop. And then that would be allowed if it, if it meets the guidelines established by game and parks and the NRA and just by administrative amendment. So it wouldn't come back before us and, but it would be, it would have some controls on it that makes sense.
Right, so basically what we'd be looking at is the stuff that's more connected to the commercial aspect of this building, potential commercial aspect going forward than the casual activity that's happening on your other property.
Yeah, that was my main point in the first meeting.
Okay. Other questions? Are we done?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have testimony in support of this item? Remember to give your name and address.
Yep.
Thanks.
Chris Westover, forty-nine fifteen South Seventy-Second Street. Um, I'm actually privileged to be one of the shooters at Derek's sponsors. I'm also a, well, part of the fourteen member. People that do go out and shoot and go to traveling tournaments throughout the states, uh, so on and so forth. And, uh, he's granted us permission to shoot there, but he also gave us certain conditions that we need to follow. And we just can't go out there and, and, and shoot all willy-nally, if you will. Um, the conditions, uh, would be to be courteous to the neighbors, to be aware of what's around you. Be safe. Definitely no drinking of alcohol on the premises. I'm just basic ten commandments of shooting. Um, and the shooters, uh, are responsible for anything. That happens at the range during their duration of practice. So essentially we'd be liable if something were to happen. I can say that many of us shooters that do shoot there, we have years and years of experience. We have law enforcement, uh, police officers that do come out there and shoot also. Ninety-five percent of the people that do shoot out there regularly, regularly are range officers, which is range safety officers. It's our job to, to make sure that, uh, shooters, people and property is safe. And that shooting conditions, uh, or scenarios are safe. And, and properly handling of firearms and how we do that. So it was brought up, I think, last meeting of accidental discharges and that stuff. Well, if we are doing our job and what we're supposed to be and we do have an accidental discharge, it's going into a safe place where it won't be destroying any property or, or hurting anybody. So that's, that's really all I have to say. So if you guys have any questions.
Questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Hilger, six-one-two-one West Beal Circle here in Lincoln. Um, I'm here because I utilize the range probably more than anybody. Before I go further with that, uh, I do have some experience in this field. Um, I am a firearms instructor and are certified by the state of Nebraska and have been for over twenty years. Um, I've held several instructor certificates in multiple types of firearms, including shotgun, carbine rifle. I've also had select fire training and precision rifle training. At this time, I'm also currently, uh, an NRA, National Rifle Association, basic handgun instructor. As well as a, uh, NROI, National Range Officer Instructor, uh, range officer certified. The range use was granted but to me by Mr. Brohman along with a few select shooters for training as well as teaching safe firearms and handling use. I, uh, as I have said, I've regularly used this ru- range probably more than anybody. I've used it, um, to train my children, um, both teenagers now who are both also range officers. I made them take the course along with hunter safety prior to, um, being able to do some of this stuff. They're also both competitive shooters who have competed on the national level. I will not and would not use a range or allow a range to be used that would endanger people. Um, I also know the team, the fourteen members of this team who have been utilizing this area to shoot and train. And they are respectful and very skilled in their craft. Um, I trust all of them. Um, so I'm here to explain the, the safety measures a little bit more of this range. Not, it's not even a range, it's an area to shoot. There's nothing permanent there. And it's not something where, um, there is a berm that we shoot into. Um, I can show you here. And you'll have to, excuse me, I don't know how to, if it automatically kicks on or what?
It'll turn over in just a second. There you go.
Yeah. Okay. The area we are shooting is located right about here. Um, those lakes have a upward berm to them that is our backstop. There is nothing, as you see, for, for almost a mile this way. And what I'm here to, to dispel is some of the rumor and innuendo about the location and the safety for these daycare kids and ensure you that this is safe for them. When you look through the, the training and all the explanations we've done, or that I've, I train, when we train and when I train my children and when we shoot, we, we consider a hundred-and-eighty-degree plane. And that hundred-and-eighty-degree plane comes from the impact point of the berm to where the shooter is. And so the idea is you, you don't let a, a loaded firearm cover any aspect past that hundred-and-eighty-degree plane. And you definitely don't shoot anywhere past that. We're, we're putting our rounds into the berm. That is our, our concept. When you look at the hundred-and-eighty-degree plane from that location, everything's been said so far that I've seen and, and heard is that the, the range is four hundred yards from this, from this house in daycare. Um, if we were hunting, where they have the, the law says you can't be more than, closer than two hundred yards, we're well beyond the law of, of legal range to be able to hunt beside this house. Um, we are more than, actually more than four hundred yards away. We are, when you go to the point about here, which is directly south of the farthest corner. You can't see it on this picture, but when you look at an overhaul, overall lay of this location, the house in the backyard has a fenced-in area. Where it's obvious the children are, are allowed to play and that's where the daycare, you can see from a satellite imaging or however they took the photo, um, some of the play equipment. So this is where they're contained. So we are over four hundred, it's almost four hundred and fifty yards to this point. But then, uh, when you go off that hundred-and-eighty-degree bl- plane and you measure it this way from that por- portion to the very farthest corner of their, their lot, to their fence where the kids are playing, it's fifty yards behind us. So they're, they're actually behind the point where we're shooting. Sometimes we'll shoot as far back as twenty-five yards with a handgun, maybe a little farther if some of us are a little more established to do so. But even then, the shooters, i- if you were to take people and you stand behind shooters, and we do it all the time when we run through courses and stuff, they're much closer than fifty yards. These folks are well behind us. This range, the location where we're shooting, the location where we're practicing is safe to them. And I wouldn't allow otherwise. I wouldn't even practice otherwise. That is, that is my basic testimony at this point. If you have any questions.
Questions?
So your children have been out there with you shooting?
Yes, they have.
So that contradicts that it's only the team that goes out there and shoots.
No, it does not. My son is a member of the team.
Of the fourteen-member team?
Yes. Now, not to be contradictory, I also include my daughter who is hoping at some point to, I'm training them also. So yeah, it's not necessarily only, it's, but team members are the only people bringing people out. I've included my daughter. She's hoping to be a member of the team.
Have you ever been out there at night shooting?
No, absolutely not. Our, our schedule throughout the summer has been every Tuesday, Thursday morning from about eight o'clock in the morning till we shoot out for two, three hours. And that was it. And then occasionally, if we had something going on before a match or we had to test a firearm that we were repairing or something, we would go out there. We've gone out there in the evening, um, somewhere around, last time we were out there, it was about six o'clock in the evening because we broke a firearm we had to fix. But it's definitely not in the dark or anything like that. There is absolutely no alcohol being used when we are out there.
And so when you're shooting, you're saying that you're always shooting towards the north? You're never shooting like to the east or to the west or to the south?
No, we are shooting north into the berm. You know, we're, we're more controlled, we're, we're, we're very directed into that berm. And we're even far, or farther away than a hunting blind that is located on this property over here. So.
Which property? I didn't see where you pointed.
There is a hunting blind in this area here.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks. Additional testimony and support? Come forward. Is there any testimony in opposition?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Mark Jacobson. I live at one-four-zero-one-zero O Street. Uh, and I appreciate these guys being safe. I mean, I, 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 that means a lot. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. One of the gentlemen mentioned that ninety-five percent of them are range officers and it's not those guys I'm worried about. It's the other five percent. And as far as the frequency, I'll, I'll discuss that a little bit momentarily, but, um, I want to start out a little bit talking about, there's been some references made about Isaac Walton. And, um, I, I just wanted to mention a few things about that facility. Does this come on automatically? Um, I, I visited this place here recently and it, it's actually very impressive on what they have. As you drive in, they've got signs up, they've got security cameras up there. As you pull in, to get back to the shooting ranges, you have to pass through a gate. Uh, every member has a personal swipe card they have to get in, so. And this is probably one of the biggest issues that I'm concerned with. They know who's on their property at all times, uh, because of the personal cards. They know when they leave. And I, and I think that's, that's a good deal. Just a couple more photos real quick. They've got security cameras up so they can watch things. The shooting ranges themselves, they got a couple different, I think they have three different shooting ranges. But on the ranges themselves, you can see that where you stand, you actually have to shoot under, I, I believe they call those baffles to stop any, you know, bullets going astray. This one is their hundred-yard range. It's similar and my understanding is, uh, you know, that this range is normally closed unless they have someone that's watching them. I mean, they, they have to be supervised in order to, to use that range. I want to show you some of the berms. I stepped out of the side there and showed the berms. Those berms are, I, I don't, I don't know how to measure them and I'm guessing they're about thirty foot tall. Um, they also have berms on the sides that are probably ten or twelve feet tall. They have, just real quickly, they have rules posted on every range and this is an NRA requirement. There's another picture of some of the berms. That's actually kind of looking underneath one of the baffles, but it'd be almost impossible for a stray bullet to go up over those berms. There's another fixture. I think this is their handgun, handgun range here, where you have to shoot underneath that fixture. Once again, I know this isn't about Isaac Walton, but there were references made. I want to just explain a few differences. This is a picture. I took this through a window, so it's not very clear, but this is their bar area. Uh, they do have a bar. It was closed when I was there. Uh, that, that, the bar is only open, uh, for special occasions such as if a member rents it for wedding, uh, wedding, wedding recital or, or reception, um, birthday parties. But when they open up, shooting range closes. Okay, the, the shooting range is open, there's no bar open. Um, like I said, it's only there for special occasions. They also have, um, a caretaker that lives on, on site. So there's always someone there maintaining the property. Now, and they are an NRA-approved shooting range, um, which quite honestly, I, I wouldn't, I'd be tickled to death if we had a range such as that close to us. But, you know, here again, this is the range that we're talking about. There is, well, they call it a berm. It's actually a waste lagoon there. But they shoot into a side of a waste lagoon. And I don't know if it's, it might be about five foot tall, I'm guessing. But there's no side berms. From what I can tell, I mean, and I know there's sometimes supervision there. There's range officers at times, but there's no gates, um, there's no security cameras. Nobody knows who's on there at any given time. Pretty sure this would not meet NRA's approval. I'm not going to sit here and tell you I know what NRA's guidelines are, but, but I, I wish she would meet NRA's approval and I don't think too many people would have too many problems with that. I'm a little hesitant to bring this up, but you'll notice that they are shooting into the side of a waste lagoon hit there. And I don't know if any of you have a waste lagoon or know anything about waste lagoons.
Can you begin to start wrapping up? You're, you're at the end of your time.
Oh, should I have extra time?
Yeah, well.
I'll, I'll hurry things along, I'm sorry. If anybody knows anything about waste lagoons, there's some rules and regulations. They have to be fenced in. They're, in fact, they, they're very specific. The fence has to be so tall. There has to be a locked gate. Uh, it's got to be no trespassing signs. But the old fence was here, which was taken down to put the lagoon, uh, put their, uh, ranges inside there. Which, you know, that, that's a violation, maybe not a huge one, but I, I just, I feel like that demonstrates their lack of safety guidelines. Now, one of the questions that was brought up and, and on what, on, you know, what is a private shooting range? Now, this was in the letter that you guys all have. It's been insinuated that a private shooting range has no rules and regulations. To me, this rule or this definition of a shooting range, there's no distinction between private or public. I feel like a shooting range is a shooting range and they should all meet the same sa- safety standards. I don't, I think it's ridiculous to think a private shooting range can meet a lower safety standard. Pretty sure the bullets don't fly off a private shooting range any differently than a public range. I, I just feel like if, if we're going to serve alcohol in this area, I, I, I think it should be an NRA-approved shooting range. Now, I want to address, there were some comments made about the volume of shooting going on. And I, I guess I'm, we've heard those guys say there's just a handful of people come out. I, I guess I beg to differ on that. Now, I'm not home during the day, so I can't, I can't speak for myself, but the shooting started probably around July first area. And my wife was concerned with her daycare and I, I told her, I said, why don't you keep track of how often they're shooting? And, uh, an average day during the week, they're there about, there's, there's shooting going on six to eight hours a day. Now, I don't know how many people are out there. All we know is there's shooting going on. And it, it lasts for a long time. If she wants to go outside with them, she sticks her head out the door, listens for gunfire. If there's no gunfire, she'll take, take them out. If she's outside with them and she hears it, then she takes them right back inside. She is certified by the state. Uh, the state requires her to have outdoor time for the children. Uh, so this, this may even be a challenge to keep her state certification. But now with the exception of the past two weeks, the past two weeks has been, it's been wonderful out there. There's been nothing going on. It's been pretty much ghost town on the shooting range. But, um, other than just a couple of occasions, I've heard a few shots, but it's, it's been really quiet the last couple of weeks. But, and it's been pretty nice. But it's, it's a rare day when we don't have six to eight hours of shooting going on. Saturdays seems to be their busiest days typically. Sundays kind of iffy. They, they may not be out at all on Sundays or there may be just a couple of hours of shooting. But once again, I don't know who's coming out. I don't know if it's those guys or, I mean, I mean, sometimes I wonder if he really knows who's out there. I mean, it, it's, it's an open range. Anybody can pull up and start shooting.
Quick, quickly?
Okay, I'm sorry. Now, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Brohman made the comment that the shooting range was irrelevant to the liquor license. And I, I, I beg to differ on that too. I think the shooting range is probably the most relevant thing on there. And that being said, um, you know, I, I, I feel like allowing alcohol to be served on the shooting range the way it's being operated, the way it's wide open, I think is a huge mistake. Thank you for your time.
Questions?
Uh, yes. So realizing that this, the poten- potential conditions in this memo don't necessarily take care of some of your concerns because.
No.
Uh, but, but setting that aside, because that's a different matter, how do you feel about what this memo proposes? what this memo proposes? What do you like and not like about it?
Well, as far as, I mean, that memo would stop the shooting from the highway out here, but it wouldn't stop, they'd still be able to shoot down here. I guess, it wouldn't be ideal, but it would at least be a step in the right direction, I believe. Personally, I...
Do you lean, I know, there are a few options here between 3A and B. Do you have an opinion?
Well, I...
You had...
I like, well, if you're making me choose here...
Well, you certainly don't have to.
At first I thought B, I'd be fine with either one, except for the fact that that's not going to stop any shooting in this area.
And we can't.
We can't.
We can't. Okay, well, okay.
But you had mentioned that you thought an NRA-approved range would make you feel more comfortable.
Oh, absolutely.
There is an option B that, in the memo, that talks about an outdoor range, the condition being that it would need to meet the safety...
That would be, I mean, that would be great if it's NRA-approved, but I think, you know, that's going to take some work on his part to do that. But, you know, we just want to be safe in our own house, in our own neighborhood. I want my wife, I want our family to be safe, I want the daycare kids to be safe, and that's really all I have to hear. And I, Mr. Broman mentioned in one of his letters, I can't remember which one it was, that we've never made an effort to contact him, to talk to him about things, and I regret that. I wished I would have. I wish we, and I wouldn't be opposed to sitting down and talking to him and see if we can work out maybe hours or something, you know, come to some terms there, but I wouldn't be opposed to doing that at all. But that's all I have.
Other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there other testimony? Opposition?
I'm Mike Ghost Trout. I lived at 1100 Plum Ridge Road. Still opposed to the liquor license. The reason for that is because of my daughter, her daycare. I know we had some professionals come up here, talk about ranges and their safety, the children's safety. I can understand maybe a pistol not flying too far, but what about the rifles that are being shot? The high-powered velocity bullets that are being shot? I myself, I'm an avid shooter. I love shooting pistols, I love shooting guns, and I love hunting. Now, I got the Nebraska Games and Parks Hunting Guide. This is in question about an alcohol permit. They're bringing up this gun blind, or ground blind, whatever, it's a duck blind. It's in full. You look at the Hunting Guide on page 24, it does state, while rifle with 200 yards of a inhabitants dwelling feedlot, to hunt with other equipment, what they talk about as other equipment will be bow and arrow, shotguns. That is within 100 yards. And that ground blind actually is within guidelines. Here again, I oppose the alcohol license for that premises, and that's all I have.
Questions?
Good late afternoon. My name is Sandy Roach. I live at 251 Pebble Beach. I am actually questioning the sincerity of the city planner and Mr. Broman. This initially started two weeks ago with, okay, I want a liquor license. And then now, all of a sudden today, we have representatives in telling you about safe shooting, which wasn't any part of this whole ordeal. So, my husband and I did write the letter that I think is very important. Our question is, before Mr. Broman is granted a liquor license, which we personally have no problem with him getting, we would hope that this committee postpones a liquor license until a further or final business plan through the county is approved. Before a liquor license is approved, Mr. Broman should not be able to meander all over the place with no concrete, specific plan other than a liquor license. I know today, we wrote this before, he came in today with all of these possibilities for dealing with liquor and shooting. That is fine, and those are all possibilities. But he's not being a good neighbor. The day after the meeting that we had, there was shooting the very next morning. And then it kind of quieted down. So I don't know if someone said, you know, maybe you should quiet things down a bit because we're trying to deal with something here. I think my husband and I are looking for someone who is neighborly, a good businessman, which might be in question right now, and a safe environment for our whole community out there. We have residents, and I'm not worried about the shooting because I'm not going to be shot out there unless I go over and enjoy the restaurant. And that's my only concern. Any questions?
I don't see any. Thanks.
Okay, and I also appreciate, you did address, evidently some of you did read our letter, because you did address some of the concerns that we did have.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Gailey. I am the property owner directly to the east. There's a couple things. First of all, I wish Mr. Broman success in his business. I agree with, there should be a business plan, that he seems to want to jump around from place to place, maybe to suit his own needs as he sees fit. There's also been a lot of emails thrown back and forth, sent to you guys. I want to clarify some things. First of all, there's never been a Stevens Creek Storyt Restaurant. I've never had a liquor license. I've been the landlord of the restaurant, so I want to make sure he understands that. It would be, I did have an incidence on June 30th, that I did go and talk to Mr. Broman. At the time, it was about shooters shooting in all directions into the lagoon. I wrote about it in the last meeting. I'm sorry for bringing that up today. However, the news or the revelation that there's no more, no longer the fence that's up around the lagoons, I'm sorry, can you hear me? The fence around the lagoons is part of the DEQ requirements. You can't just take them down. Whether you're using the lagoon or not, you just don't get to take them down without their permission. That's where he's shooting. You can see, he is shooting right into where I pointed to here, which is well, in this, this is where the fence and gate used to be. They also shoot from here at this point. They also shoot from here at this point. Now, I realize in the hunting guidelines, you cannot shoot within 200 yards of an existing dwelling. I was building here. When he's shooting here, I am well within the supposed safety, guys, 180-degree view. Now granted, there are some trees there, but I'm well in that view, and he still does it. In fact, the day after the meeting last week, between 1:00 and 1:20, I have worked on some parking up here. I'm impacting the gravel, and he was shooting. I honked my horn to say, hey, oh, I'm right here, please stop. They continued until they were done. Now, maybe he thought I was just trying to antagonize him. I don't know what he was thinking, but they kept shooting. You're saying that the liquor license, you're saying that this is all two lots. Now, I want to clarify what you're saying with two lots. This is all one lot. However, he's trying to make the liquor license in this area. Now, are you, I guess I have a question. Is that two lots in your mind? Because legally, this is one lot.
The special permit has boundaries, and these are the boundaries of the special permit.
So you're trying to say that that's a second lot?
Well, I wouldn't use those words. I would say that's the boundary of the special permit.
That's why I'm saying, the words are being thrown around, that there's two lots on this property. There is not two lots on this property, there is only one.
Understood.
Okay. The boundaries of the lagoon are as my finger follows. You know, where he's shooting shouldn't be allowed. I don't really have too many problems with his shooting. I do have a problem with what he is doing. He needs, I'm sorry, I hear the timer. He needs to mend some fences figuratively and literally. He needs to be putting that fence back up to meet DEQ regulations. He's also taken down the fence in between us. Now, I have a six-foot fence with barbed wire on the top of it that I have set back onto my property, so that I wouldn't be any violation or any close to anybody who bought that property. He has taken that fence down. I don't know if that's a violation of trespassing. That's just irresponsible, in my opinion, unneighborly. I would like to talk to him more, but I don't feel like talking to him sometimes is going to work. I would like to work out to a good resolution to this. I have no qualms with him having a business. In fact, I encourage it. I think it's great. But he needs to have, like many people, he has wanted to say that he needs to have a business plan. I guess one of the questions is, and I feel like we're going to tiptoe around this, what is the restaurant's hours? What time of the day? Because if we're not going to have any shooting during the time of the day that the restaurant is, and the restaurant's open from 7:00 to 2:00 a.m., you got no problems. Not for him. Same way with the off-sale liquor. Got no problems for him. The noise is an issue. It does bother me, it does bother my tenants. I have an established business. That building is within 200 yards of where he's shooting, and I understand, there is no law against this. And that is very scary. I brought it up to many people. I brought up the same question, and I'm actually going to, I can't believe I'm really going to say this, but I am going to say it. There's a golf course across the street. It has houses. The houses are outside the city limit. There's nothing stopping them from shooting their gun off. There's no law. This is scary. Now, he wants to call this not his shooting range. He's acting like it's pop cans and beer bottles, or whatever you want to call it. It's more than that. You saw from the pictures, he has established shooting objects. If he moved that over here, he probably wouldn't have a problem with any of us. Just a suggestion. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
Yeah, can you put that map back up before you...
Certainly.
So when you say that he's down by O Street shooting, is he shooting, are they shooting north still into that berm?
Yes. They're about 50 feet from the highway state line. There's a picnic bench up there. He also has a picnic bench right here. And he also has one down here. Those are the three designated areas that he shoots from. Or, excuse me, him and, him or his friends shoot from. Now, the incident of not having this fence up, had he had that up, these people shooting into the lagoon, when I was standing right here, wouldn't have happened. And they were shooting in my direction. And I brought that up to him. He said the bullets wouldn't fly that far. That was on June 30th. Any other questions you'd like to ask?
Questions? Nope, thank you.
I really don't have a problem with business. I really don't. It's the shooting. Thank you.
Do we have questions for staff?
Is there any more opposition, testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Kitchard Dager, and I own Prairie View Preschool at 14332 O Street. I also reside on our property at 14302 O Street. I wasn't able to make it. A couple weeks ago, my husband came and spoke, and again, I think he said we didn't really have any problems with the restaurant and those types of things, but the shooting and the alcohol together, we just feel is a bad combination. I know, I understand, and I appreciate the fact that he has shooters that are experienced and those types of things, but from what he's saying, he's hoping to sell some permits. Those permits usually allow people to come to practice and learn how to shoot. They're not always going to be experienced, qualified people shooting. And is there going to be experienced, qualified staff helping those people learn to shoot? Or are they just going to be allowed to shoot? These are just some questions that we're kind of concerned about. Also, we have 80 acres, and I take my preschoolers down, and we do hikes and things. And fortunately for us, we have a huge dam, so there's really not any real scare, I don't believe, for us. It's got a lot of things to hit before it gets to us. But, you know, Diana's property is kind of big. If she ever wanted to take her kids to hike at the corner of their property, I know he had a little measuring stick that said, you know, it was way too far from their house. Well, that's not their property. She could be allowed to take her kids in any of that property. And I feel that that, if you look at the map, the distance, if she wanted to take her kids on a hike at the corner of her property, the distance is not what it should be. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions? Is there any other testimony in opposition? Okay, if not, are there questions for staff? Yes, I thought the problem would be...
Yeah, I think we've got questions.
Yeah.
Perhaps multiple staff.
Maybe before you ask, let me clarify something. We were sort of talking about it earlier. Looking at the memo, those recommendations, those conditions, 1, 2, and 3, so I think Rick Pao suggested, 3 is, I think more correctly read, deleting the "or," substituting "unless."
So it's A unless B?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Well, my next question is, I really want to clarify the relationship of the boundaries of the special permit and the lot, and what the, what regulatory ability, if any, the planning commission has with regard to the parts of the lot which are not covered by the special permit.
Okay, well, I think, I think, I think our assistant city attorney also clarified, we're only talking about regulating with a special permit this property. Sorry. It's true, there are multiple lots here, okay? There is more than one lot. This owner owns multiple lots. Now, together, they are one larger premises. As you look at the county's website, it's going to show up as one large lot, but the fact is, there's multiple lots here, okay? And so this special permit here...
Multiple lots with one owner.
Multiple lots with one owner.
Okay.
So what's outlined with the boundary here, that's Lot 50. And so that is the boundary of the special permit. That special permit, the way it's written, authorizes sale of alcohol within the area designated as such on the site plan. And that's just the area of the restaurant and the off-sale and that outdoor dining area. That's the only place that alcohol currently is shown to be designated if it's approved as it's submitted. Okay? I just wanted to clarify, so.
When a special permit comes in, does the applicant pick the boundaries? How does that work?
Typically, yes, yeah.
Can we change the boundaries?
Maya has something.
So with regards to the lagoon and the fences that should or shouldn't be there, could you tell us who, whose authority is that, and who enforces that?
Yeah, I don't believe it's a city or county agency. I think somebody suggested State Department of Environmental Quality, and that is neither city nor county.
So it's way out of our purview?
Yes.
My call. That was my question. Any other questions?
I have one question. On the, in the memo...
in the memorandum, number one saying 24 hours after consuming alcohol. If this were to go forward, he gets his liquor license, he opens up the indoor/outdoor range, however that all works out according to this. If he has leagues out there, I come out there and shoot at 6 o'clock one night, shoot for an hour, I go have dinner from 7 to 8, that's saying I can't come out and shoot again until 8 o'clock the next night?
24 hours.
Yeah, after consuming alcohol, correct. I mean, would 20 hours be a more appropriate type thing then?
We were, um, I believe that, uh, we were pulling that standard, um, that I think is in use in another sort of similar facility where they have multiple uses on-site, restaurant, potential for consuming alcohol and, uh, shooting weapons. So.
How would that be enforced?
Well, okay. So there's a downside to some of this, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm like-
So one of the arguments against perhaps not including that was because it is more difficult to enforce. We have similar conditions in existing special permits in existence now, okay? Um, and it can be difficult to enforce, but maybe Rick has something to add in that regard.
I think what we have to just kind of remember is, yeah, the state has adopted some regulations of shooting ranges. And they basically said if you were in existence in 2009, when they adopted the state law, and you were pre-existing on that date, and you complied with the NRA's guidelines, uh, you were hands-off. City, we can't, nobody can regulate you, that's, that's a, an existing facility, it's managed the way it's supposed to be, and you can't regulate or change anything. If you weren't pre-existing, they left the option maybe open for the governments to regulate. The city hasn't. So we have no regulations on shooting ranges by themselves. So whether this situation probably doesn't meet NRA standards, uh, it probably is obviously some kind of a range-like shooting, as opposed to just putting up a can in my backyard or something and shooting, shooting at that, but we don't regulate it. So the only place we can potentially regulate is activities that, that we have the right to regulate. And the sale of alcohol is one of those. But you do, that is a defined premises that gets licensed by the state and has specific boundaries. And then we have to basically say what we're doing relates to the activity we're regulating. So the activity of these shootings that are not in the area of the special permit technically don't relate to the sale of alcohol at all. But that's just another activity that goes on another piece of property, whether it's under the same ownership or a third party's ownership. So we can't really say those relate to the use. Somebody put in a restaurant down there and didn't have alcohol, situation doesn't cha-change, the shooting still has whatever safety factors are involved, don't change. All we were trying to do is say, if you operate a restaurant alcohol bar and you have a shooting range on your same property, that's within that same licensed facility, well, those two uses don't really relate well together. You ought to have some way to protect people from doing what they shouldn't do. And one, the facilities that do reg, allow alcohol have specific regulations, say you can't drink after, you know, and then go fire. And they have systems of ID checks situations, so that it's, you have to get an ID to get in one part of the facility from the other, you scan your ID, it says, oh, you've been in the bar and you've had a drink, you can't, you can't go shoot. Well, we don't have that type of operation here, we're speculating what he might do. Maybe nothing. We don't even know if the alcohol business will get off the ground. So it could just be a restaurant, it might be a restaurant bar, and maybe someday he could have a pistol range or something like that. But if he's going to do those under one umbrella, then we have some rules and regulations that those, at least those facilities will be properly separated from each other. But, uh, beyond that, we've got a situation that people feel maybe is unsafe or not safe, but state law allows it. And, and we can't prohibit that, so.
Other questions?
Yep. So, last person that was up testifying stated that he has witnessed people shooting from the area within the special permit. If we put one of those restrictions on there, they couldn't shoot from that distance anymore.
Number three says they wouldn't be able to shoot outside unless a, a range that met the, the NRA standards.
So basically, on this, on this law, on the special permit, they wouldn't be able to shoot that far back from those lagoons?
I don't have that level of familiarity with, uh, the standards that would be applied either. Okay, so, so that, the second part of that is unless that outdoor range meets those requirements. Maybe that's the case, I can't say that for certain. Yeah, have to be demonstrated as part of the amendment, correct.
But that range would then have to meet the NRA and Gaiman Park's standards that would maybe make the neighbors a little more comfortable with?
I would think so, because right now there is no, I mean, we can't point to anything saying it's being, being done consistent with any standard. What we're saying here is that it wouldn't occur unless it were consistent with standards we know that exist. I mean, I think as the planning commission probably recalls, there was a, there was a range, I think we mentioned the last time, I mean, um, uh, west of the city. And that was one of the requirements, was that, um, you know, he demonstrate that that facility was being run consistent with, and that's where we pulled these references from. And it seemed to be a pretty high level, um, standard that was applied and appeared to give a relatively high confidence level for those that were interested in that relative to shooting and the safety of it.
Other questions?
Yeah, I think Lynn brought up a good point on the memorandum on number one. Would, I guess we can make the determination if we went from 24 to 20 hours, because that does make sense for the next night if you come back.
That's, that would be your call, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Applicant rebuttal? Don't have any? Okay.
I do have a question for him.
Can you come up and answer a question for Tracy? Thanks. I do too. And Michael?
Have you taken down any fences?
Uh, when I purchased the property, there were already lots of fencing cut. I mean, somebody had been going in there and doing hunting, and even the neighbor to the north said his friend was hunting over there and doing all kinds of stuff, and you got to remember, this was a building that was vacant for around five years. And the other situation with the lagoons, it was designed for 200 people working three different shifts. And that demand is not going to be there, so we're, we're, we're looking at all that. It really doesn't make sense to put up a lot of new fencing and then take it down and grade dirt or, you know, it's just, it's kind of all in the plan and the process, it's just one step at a time, and we've been working on it every day since December 18th.
Mr. Broman, uh, my question is actually about the special permit, so that's probably refreshing. You're asking for both on and, on-premises consumption and off-premises consumption?
Yeah, so we could basically do on-sale in the restaurant, off-sale, and then also catering if it expanded to that. Because like with any business, you just don't know what direction it's going to go. And it's kind of the same point with the hours. You know, I applied for, you know, what the law supports, and that may be one in the morning, but in all likelihood, it's doubtful that the restaurant would be open till 1:00 in the morning unless there was a special event or something like that. And it's nice to have that feature instead of not have it set up that way.
Is, I regret that I didn't ask this question earlier, is the off-sale, uh, permit required for catering?
I'm not sure, you'd have to ask the liquor commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No?
Thanks.
Yep.
Is it too late to ask a legal question?
I don't think so. We'd have to give Derek a chance to come back up, but I don't think he probably won't want to.
Just for clarification, in the memorandum, number one, when it talks about 24 hours after consuming alcohol, is that implied alcohol purchased from Mr. Broman's facility or any alcohol?
No, I think that's what we're saying, that's the only thing he's, he could be held responsible for, is that if he's selling alcohol from his facility, he has to monitor his customers. But, no, you, you, it's, it's not any place and everywhere that might be.
So do you see a need to clarify that? That it's only purchased from establishment? So that there's no question, or is that so implied that nobody could interpret?
Well, it says consumes alcohol on the licensed premise, not hit, you know. I mean, I think that's what we're saying, but that would, might be a good, good addition.
Thank you.
Mr. Broman, do you have any comment about that? Make a comment or? Okay. Okay, um, I guess we are ready to entertain a motion.
I am going to move for approval, including conditions two and three from the memorandum we talked about today. Uh, revising condition three to say unless between options A and B.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
There's a second, Tracy? Discussion.
Um, I think everybody, no, no one's going to disagree with me, at least up here, that this is a hard application to deal with.
No, it's easy.
The reality is that whether, however we feel about the ongoing shooting, the ongoing shooting is out of our control. And regardless of how we feel about the fence being there or not, that is something that NDEQ has to address, and we can't. When I look at this, I see that we are putting appropriate restrictions on the use of firearms within, the, the proposed and potential use of firearms, not even, uh, planned use of firearms even at this point, in a situation which may someday have an indoor shooting range. Uh, I suspect that, uh, the, whatever regulations or guidelines that the NRA, the guidelines that are provided by the NRA are going to be stricter than what we are suggesting today. I really struggled with wanting to deny this and ask for a complete, uh, plan. And I'm still struggling that, with that, despite my wanting to find a way to say yes instead of no. And I tried to get there by suggesting, let's put this on indefinite hold and come up with a complete plan for a gun club with a restaurant and a bar. But I think with these restrictions and, uh, a, a yes to the special permit, we're getting in that direction.
But the conditions only pertain to the permit area?
Yep.
Correct.
He's not really planning on putting any outdoor shooting ranges in the permit area?
Disputing. There's already shooting going on in the, in the permit area today, we heard testimony.
Right, which would eliminate that.
Yeah.
But not in-
Correct.
In the other area.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that was-
And I'm sorry, is number one part of the, the proposed?
I omitted one.
And why?
Part of it was based on your argument, that 24 hours seems arbitrary and, uh, maybe excessive, and that I suspect that whatever controls are put on the use of alcohol and firearms in the indoor range are likely, by, by the business owner, are likely to be stricter than, and more easily enforced. There was also the enforcement question, thank you for bringing that up, because we can't enforce that. We're not going to be able to. And for that reason, it seems like an empty gesture. And I believe that whatever restrictions the business owner is going to place on the relationship between the alcohol sales and the firing range, indoor firing range, or whatever outdoor firing range might ever exist or not in the area of the special permit, will be stricter than what we're suggesting here.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have?
Yeah, a, a couple of things, just towards Michael's comments right now, so I'm reserving my right to speak later.
Got it.
Number one, we, uh, we could do something with the fencing on this special permit boundary. Um, I'm concerned, uh, part of my concerns with this is I think that people out there shooting don't really know where that boundary is at. And I think that, you know, on that, especially on that eastern edge between the storage facilities, I think that, that might, um, help alleviate some potential issues there.
If we adopt condition three, there's no shooting outside.
True. The other thing I wanted to comment is, with the business plan, even if he had a business plan, it's not like he's locked into that, I mean, that's just a, it's a plan, it's not, things could still change. He could still do something completely different down the road.
I wish I'd asked this earlier, but without a fence, how do you know where the permit area is so that you know where you are allowed to shoot on the part of the law or the different lot that's not
It won't matter because Michael's, is, there's no shooting.
But, but outside of the permanent area, there, there, it is allowed.
If, if you stray into the inside and the neighbors caught wind of it, they contact the enforcement bureau and they pull your special permit. So it's incumbent on Mr. Broman and his associates to enforce that boundary.
They could potentially lose, if they get the liquor license, they could potentially lose that because of it.
Your comments, Lynn? You gonna say something?
This has been, I'm going to use the word interesting, I can't think of a better one, because of, we've never really had anything where we've run into this whole bit with city ordinances and county ordinances, kind of combining in such a way with alcohol and guns before. And it's really beginning to make me wonder if we need to address guns a little bit more and how they're used in this three-mile range. Because some of these areas are getting pretty densely, um, built up. You know, and as, going forward, as far as when we get any kind of a liquor license coming in this three-mile range where guns are involved, these, these sort of things probably need to be tacked on in one way or form, at least considered. And if it's just a small place, it's obviously not going to happen. A- as far as the, the, the gun club use in the area and the neighbors and such, you know, we, we've pretty much clearly stated that that's not part of our venue here. It's gun safety, obviously, is everybody's concern, no, no one wants to be anybody, um, hurt. But our charge is strictly with the special permit area. And I feel with, um, however he moves forward, if guns, the use of guns and range start becoming part of his plans and start materializing, we have something in place to, um, control that or guide him into the right direction. And not saying that he wouldn't be there anywhere. I, I do believe that when he puts this thing together and it comes to frutation, that the protection will be there, because he's got even more liability than just the, um, liquor license if he doesn't do it right and someone gets hurt and something else happens. I guess, and you know, from my comments, I'm obviously going to support the motion.
Any other comments? Ken?
Did, did Michael include condition two?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I, so, I understand that when you're operating a restaurant, it's really hard to make that restaurant successful without having a liquor license. And so I really don't have problems with the, um, with the, the on-sale consumption. But I do kind of have some problems with the off-sale. Prime, and this kind of goes hand in hand, because we've got this other section of property here that is still going to have shooting that can happen on it. And so they can just run to the corner and buy some beer or whatever and go up there and, and shoot. And, uh, so I'm not really seeing the success of the restaurant pending on the approval of the off-sale permit. And so I guess I would really like to see us just approve the on-sale and not the off-sale at this point. Um, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I would disagree with that. Any off-sale establishment runs the same potential scenario where you go in and buy alcohol at, at wherever, off-sale location, and then go out into the county and start shooting. And at this point, whether he owns the property or not, we're really just talking about shooting someplace in the county. And that we, if we're going to start denying off-sale because there's potential they could shoot in the county where it's legal, we'd have to be denying it to everybody. I know this feels a little bit more connected, but in my mind, that's, that's where this really comes down to.
I guess with other applications, we haven't had people come forward with such occurrences of the shooting, and that makes me concerned.
Yeah, I understand.
Michael.
That's a good segue into what I wanted to talk about, and that is, we've got neighbors here who don't trust each other on, on both sides. And I think when you came up and you said, there are fences that need to be mended here, both figurative and literal, I agree that you are right, and I think it would benefit everyone involved if there was some outreach to the neighbors and some reassurance. I have not witnessed shooting in any particular direction, I heard that the shooting is always to the north, I've heard that the shooting is not always to the north, I've heard it's into a berm, I've heard the berm isn't high enough. I think all this would be very, the whole question would be much easier, and the neighbors would be much happier if there was some outreach and some reassurance.
I agree. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify something to make, and maybe in layman's terms, what Michael's suggest, or his motion is to allow, we're not going to address the property to the north, but we're going to ask for administrative amendments for indoor and outdoor shooting on the permit property. We're not going to eliminate his ability to do it, we're just going to need an administrative-
Correct. There has to be, by administrative amendment, that will be allowed.
But we're, we're not going to address the alcohol issue, because the business owner presumably is going to take care of that.
And we can't enforce what is written here anyway.
Well, indirectly, we, I think we are addressing it in the sense that three, if I understand your motion correctly, also prohibits discharge of firearms while the special permit for, the liquor permit is in place.
Unless-
Unless there is a-
An outdoor range is established by, yes, correct.
I, I just have a couple of comments. I, I agree with my commissioners, my fellow commissioners. I think that all of our collective and individual approaches to this vote would be very different if the boundary of the special permit was different than what it is. That's, that's something that, I understand the reasons why it has been put together the way it has, but I certainly would have a different approach about how I would treat this and vote if that boundary was either extended all the way to the entire property or maybe another way just for the building or something. But I, I think that's a, it's in my, in my, in my perspective handcuffing me a little bit in terms of what I'd like to be able to do here. I want to go back to a comment that Michael has made and others have made from very early on today. I do believe in a lot of ways, it's premature right now to be asking to have a liquor license approved. This is very similar to me in terms of what we do when we go through a process of approving a preliminary plat, a subdivision master plan, and then implementation of that. We, we always ask and do see the big picture before we vote on a little piece of it. And what we're, what we're doing here is we're voting on a little piece of it without really knowing the full big picture, which is, as Michael's referred to as a business plan, but it really is a master plan. And I think it would, would have been very helpful for us to see that big picture, and it would, it would put the pieces together for us, I think, in a better way. I'm, I'm going to vote for the motion, because I think that the conditions two and three are, as Michael said, putting us in the right direction, and there's, there's a lot of things that I think could be, could be very good about this. I think that it will be important for neighbors and applicant to talk. That's the best thing that can happen right now, I think. And so, I, I think we're ready to move forward and, and vote.
Okay. I'll call the vote. This is on conditional approval of special permit 16041, amended to include staff, additional staff, conditions number two and three, amending three by replacing the word "or" with "unless." And that's identified in the staff memo dated September 22nd, 2016. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried as amended, six to zero.
I think at this time, if there's anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda, we can do that, and if not, we are adjourned.